...to help proceed with the digital annexation project. And next month we will be having a semi-annual report for shipping bills and all of the details. So that's why it looks like we have an ending date, but we actually were fortunate to receive more donations or contributions this year than what was anticipated originally. We are also completed with our project down in the North Paul Field and the last couple of calls are just coming through on how to put everything for next month and we'll look at a transfer from the water department that helps make that part possible.
I'm going to send a motion to approve the treasury report.
I'll make that motion?
Okay. I have a motion to accept the treasury report for year 2015. Any discussion? You're open?
Yes. One? Yes. And no?
Public hearing will be open for purpose of hearing support and opposition for the proposed annexation of Area 1 and Area 5. The hearing is open at 6:35. Just to help with this process, I'll give you an example. We thought it might be beneficial for organizational purposes if we approached the podium, they do this down at the legislators so people can know who you are and what you have to say in front of the committees. So this way you'll be able to get some input as far as talking to the people and any comments you have to make to us. My example is, and... Let's see, are we on? Okay. And the other thing is, can you hear us all right up here?
No.
Okay. So, okay. Okay. One of the things that I've felt over the last months with the school with the annexation or conflicts, and people go, well, Neely's full of conflicts. Tough. Conflicts come with growth. So you've got to have a conflict before you can work out and discuss things. And that's what we're here for tonight is discussion and opportunity to grow as a community. So discussion leads to questions and questions lead to resolutions. And that's what you try to, as a community, grow to. The city is a community. We're a group of people formed. Workers that we have with the community work for us, do a great job. They do hard work, they're not overly paid, so we have to thank them every month for the work they do for us. Involvement. What you're doing here tonight is involvement. You've come to share with us. This is important. Whether anything's decided or not down the road, this is important that you people show up and talk to us because that's how we form decisions based on what input is and how people feel. We do it together. So there isn't one-on-one, we're not hiding behind trees and out behind buildings, talking to each other, we're here together. We're all doing it together. We're working together to resolve things that need to be resolved in cities. You, you are the folks that we represent. So each and every one of you is why we're here. We were elected to help you. We have farmers, teachers, retired, all kinds of people. We have over a hundred volunteer people that work for the city on a monthly basis through library boards, park boards, all of the things that make the city what it is. And for that, I want to thank those folks because they're not being paid, they're doing it because they want their community to be a community, to be a growing, vibrant, active place that will draw business in. So this is how this works. So folks that want to come up, we'll give you, it seems like a reasonable time of five minutes. And come up, approach, here's the microphone.
My name is Tom Rubel. I'm the general manager of Alcorn Public Power District. And first, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you, the councilman, the mayor, and also the folks here about the very important annexation issue. I think we all can agree, the growth can often be a very good thing. The businesses in attendance would like to grow their businesses, the individuals in attendance would like to see a flourishing community. The city of Neely would like to grow. And Alcorn was one for serving, so the more people we can serve and help, the better. The challenge becomes determining the right path to facilitating positive growth for all. Therefore, you have a very important decision in front of you tonight, one that is best made with as many facts as possible, as informed decisions are fast. So the reason I'm here tonight is to share some information and perspectives from the electrical consideration standpoint, as well as ask some questions. Hopefully, this will assist you and people that are impacted by this important annexation decision. Alcorn's Neely outpost is part of Area 5, the proposed annexation area. If annexed, there will be increased costs for doing the business, which ultimately impact all consumers. When we increase costs for people, this often reduces spending in other ways by those same people. And this may far outweigh the perceived benefits of raising those costs. I'm concerned for the thirteen services and nine customers that are part of this annexation. I'm concerned because Alcorn exists to serve our customers, and this proposed annexation will impact them from an economic standpoint and possibly an electrical reliability aspect. We did a rate comparison looking at these customers' usage over the last year and applied the city of Neely's appropriate rates and Alcorn's rates. Alcorn's rates were lower. So besides being impacted with other costs such as tax increases, they will be negatively impacted from the cost in Quinella Power Bill also. In addition, per state statute, there will be costs for the city of Neely to acquire the lines from Alcorn. This statute is designed to make Alcorn remaining customers' customer base whole for the losses caused by the annexation. Preliminary numbers look to be in the $470,000 range, but we are still analyzing these numbers and the impact. We may even need to move a substation, because losing this load would impact the need to have this substation located in this area. If this relocation is needed, that could increase that number. My next concern is that the lines and transformers serving these customers are 7200 pro for 70 volts. And Neely's system is operated at 244160 volts, which means that something major will have to change. For example, Neely's electrical division may have to change out all the transformers to match their 244160 volts, yet another cost. Even if the city chooses not to take over the electrical lines and Alcorn continues to serve these customers, because that is an option, this electrical cost would increase their cost by five percent for a gross revenue tax and another one percent by sales tax as these costs would become applicable for the annex area. However, this would still be cheaper, a cheaper option for both the city and the affected customers than having the city serve them. In addition, the substation that I referenced earlier has capacity to take on additional load growth in this area and proven capacity to handle the existing load, which leads to my next questions. These customers make up over a megawatt load. Now, to put that into a relevant number for you folks, a megawatt is equivalent to about a hundred homes that have a 10 kilowatt load. Does the city's electrical infrastructure have capacity to handle this load? What upgrades to Neely's electrical grid system will need to be made and at what cost? Maybe even more importantly, will these annex folks have enough power to run their businesses, or will they have voltage issues leading to equipment failure, downtime, and the loss of business opportunities? Which ultimately leads to yet another cost for these folks. Maybe you've already considered these things, but if not, please do. It is already tough enough to keep businesses and people in rural communities. Adding additional costs that can be avoided only increase that problem. It doesn't help us grow, it makes us shrink. Thank you for your time.
I am Randy Rankin, a third-generation active community member. Dear Neely City Council members, Mr. Dale Wilkinson, Ms. Steph Wannick, Mr. Leonard Miller, Mr. Ted Hughes. As you know, our Neely Economic Growth Committee has City Hall for records for cost estimates for expansion of electrical infrastructures, cost estimates for water and sewer for all these businesses and homes in the area. City had no estimates on new utility fees that would be given. You provided us no estimates when such services would be able to all your annex areas. You provided no projected new city property tax levy rates. You provided us no projected first-year new property tax revenue. What will this budgeted tax money expense items, which new revenue would fund? What would this added tax revenue fund? Do you think this is prudent to grow Neely? Without any of this data and based mostly on the advertising and promotional pictures by the Miller and Associates Comprehensive Plan, the ongoing cost will come back on Neely taxpayers, maybe not now, but in the future. Please vote this annexation down because I have concern for residents and our Neely businesses. Thank you.
Are we on? My name... My name is Don Meadows. Not on?
What do you do there, Tom?
Can you all hear me back there? All right, thank you. Go with that. Camera on it? All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Hello?
My name is Don Meadows. And I have a business, or I did have a business, but I still have property on Main Street in Neely, and I am a taxpayer. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Mayor, you restricted desire twice tonight to bring the people of this community together to talk about problems, talk their problems out. Appreciate that, is what we need. You know, in the past ten years, the city council has not always been allowed. You have the opportunity to rectify this at this meeting. To gain the trust, I respectfully submit to you and all council members and the city adjourned to be completed before the second reading of this plan filed with the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission. Commission forms, NABC, C123. Also regarding TIF, completed forms revise statutes 182103, 182111, and 182113. Please complete it before your next read. Thank you.
My name is Connie Baker. I'm one of the annexed areas. I would like you to answer Randy's question, what are you going to use the new revenue to fund? I'm asking Ted, what is the new revenue from the annexation going to fund?
This is a public hearing, not a debate. So let's listen before we hear your comment.
Well, how do I get our questions asked?
That's all right. I think it's... Economic development is what's started all of this. It was 840, probably 840 came out a few years ago, and it was passed unanimously by the city to do some economic development. So I think of a lot of what's going on is to try to continue on with that. And part of the economic development is, is to expand into your area. Necessarily, the money helps, I think, to operate the city. It's part of what's used to run the parks, run the water system, run all of those things that can't... The police, there's no way to have an income from the police, so there's different services that we offer. And what I would like to ask is if people would, instead of disagreeing with it, feel like they're part of the community and help, say, I know it's tough, I don't want to pay more taxes, but will I help? Can I help? So that's part of what that money is going for, is that support this community, which helps support the whole county in a roundabout way. It all works together.
So you want the revenue from our properties?
Why not? Wouldn't that be a, if you're going to expand that, wouldn't that be a common sense thought that you would want to get some revenue to help provide better services for you? So when you went out to market your product, we would have an economic development person that could help you sell your product, because that's what we have, is we have somebody that can help you. You would be hiring them to help you to do a better job on your business.
On page 114 of the city's comprehensive plan written by Miller and Associates, it states, "Because commercial development is so heavily hinged on attracting private investors, business owners, it is essential for the community to constantly work on attracting new business in order to grow the tax base." Can you confirm that this annexation plan is one to possibly attract private business for the purpose of growing the tax base?
I sure hope so, Karen.
And we're always looking at trying to attract new businesses to our town, not just through annexation, but this has been a goal in our community. As Joe stated, our community voted for economic development nine to one, and, sorry, and they said loud and clear that they want economic development.
Same thing you're asking for, exactly.
But you just told me it's about more tax revenue for the city.
Tax revenue supports all of those entities, all of those things that we do. At the last meeting, I said it would be, which you can't say anything about, I'd be mistaken, but I said, I said something about using the streets and all that. Well, there's a lot that goes on here. There's parks, there's, when you go to the FSA to pay your taxes, you're flushing the stool with city water. There's all kinds of things happening. And I guess my thing is, help us. Help us to be a great place to live, greater place to live. I already think we've got a great place to live. It's funding, it's help, it's economic development, it's all those things that go into making this a better place.
Has Miller provided you with any examples of our city's size where they have worked in Kansas and Nebraska, or demographic and economic growth resulted from their strategic planning or annexation proposals, et cetera, that average city taxpayers in those communities saw a decline in their property taxes as the city budgets were used, as the city budgets were spread among a larger number of taxpayers?
I don't know if we would know that. I think that probably the next meeting...
Wouldn't you research that before you hired them?
If you have a question that would direct us in that direction, let us do some research to answer that question for you.
Well, I fear the opposite, because that's what Miller helps come up just for the opposite. If so, could you, you could start, asking about the city of Neely and growth.
If you would give us that question, let's research it. We're going to have another meeting next month and get you an answer to your question.
Do you think it's wise, in light of the well-known limitations on our agricultural-based economy, when Miller writes in the plan, page 90, "During the steering group public input meetings, many future development ideas were discussed. Attendees were asked to ignore their knowledge of current property owners and to dream big for Neely. Is there not a risk that when city planners are wanting to cook up big dreams off the front backs of local property tax, local property taxpayers, that long after some of you are out of office, and long after Miller and Associates has gone down the road to another city, that some serious harm may come to the taxpayers' way for ignoring current property owners and dreaming like this?"
Connie, would you give us a copy of that question so we can research it for you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Keith White. I'm a long-time, awful long-time resident of the city of Neely. And I believe the city government has done many things, too numerous to mention, to help and improve the quality of life here in Neely. I followed the annexation plan the city's proposed, and having previously owed to the tracks the city's plans to annex, I have some thoughts. When we wanted to expand our storage capacity at the grain company by three and a half million bushing, Neely did not want us to build. Genoa didn't want us to build, and Oakdale didn't want us to build. Noise, dust, truck traffic were the reasons given. We selected a site on seventeen acres east of Neely. That site has proved to be ideal and has since been developed into a state-of-the-art country grain elevator. By my estimate, the city would receive about $145,000 in additional real estate taxes if this annexation plan is approved. However, to this day, no one has been able to give me any estimate of the cost to annex these parcels. I believe the city would have to build four to five thousand feet of water and sewer line, a lift station, provide electrical service, and other infrastructure. There are no cost estimates that I'm aware of for this plan. I really believe before we approve this plan, we should know the real cost. We don't want to pass the plan and no one says before the answer flows. I believe before we approved it, a successful banker once told me, "A bad deal is always in a hurry." What's the rush with this annexation plan? Let's figure out what the cost actually is, do the math, and decide if the plan is good for me. Thank you.
Funny record, that's a G-O-H-N-S-T, or... Mr. Mayor, council? I'm going to take a little different approach. I do not live in Neely. My address is Clearwater, I live, of course, in Georgia. I've been coming to Neely for years. My grandfather lived in Neely, aunts and uncles lived in Neely, cousins lived in Neely. For God's sakes, you can't leave seats here, pretty much half the FSA office. I remember when I was younger, we were in high school, we had, which would have been younger, friends, friends and neighbors, they'd go to O'Neill, they'd go to Plainview. Our family always came to Neely. And personally, I would, I'd rather come to Neely. Now, I'm not going to take you literally at all, most. I'll do my best to come to town and not flush the toilet while I'm at the courthouse. But, but my point is, I made numerous checks around town every month. I used to bank in Neely. For God's sakes, Dennis, if you was still here, I thought you'd still be banking in Neely. So I feel that the annexation to the Baumgart's and the Shewer Viewers, where I do a considerable number of business, to me, that's taxation without representation because I do not live in Neely. But my thought is, they tried that in Boston a couple, a couple years ago, it didn't work very well, I think, so, thank you.
Well, we have a little break. I don't know if you want to listen to me, but there is nothing that we do in this county that doesn't hammer a farmer. Taxes, all this stuff that we try to do to provide services hits the farmer. Sales tax, property tax passed on, LD, when you run a business, you're going to pass some of that on. You may eat some, but you may pass it on. The farmers get hammered. They are our livelihood here, Bob, they are. We have to live and die based on how the farming community does. And we do not like to tax them. I hate taxes. I don't like the government especially, but there's services that are provided and you don't want to keep coming after the same people for money all the time. So I understand where you're coming from. I wish there was a good answer that we could circumvent them and get around it without doing that. It doesn't seem to happen. So I apologize for what we do to the farmer because we don't want to, honestly. We want to provide services so you don't have to go to Norfolk, Omaha, or Lincoln. You can come here, you can come to Baumgart's, you can come to Dreamline, and we're all in the community together, working together to help you save ten bucks worth of gas to get down there. You might spend a dollar on sales tax, but maybe we saved you nine dollars on gas. So it's, there's no good answers for it. So thanks for saying that, because wholeheartedly, I understand. Well, let you wait until everybody's done, and then you can have another shot.
My name is Jerry Anderson. My name is Jerry Anderson, a business owner in town, and I've been involved with the community for a lot of years. We raised our family here. And some of the comments made bother me. The comprehensive plan, I don't know where everybody gets their information, but we spent a lot of time a year ago on a comprehensive plan. The community was invited to participate. There was a lot of people that came, they were open to the public. We had, we got a plan, you know, it was the people that talked, unbeknownst to some of the comments that have been put around. There was one night that was just basically all annexation. We met at the library, anybody that could come, I don't know how many people that are here tonight participated. It was open to the public. We had maps, we had little houses for Monopoly games to decide what would be best for business, commercial, residential, parks for the town. And I just, you know, at the end of the day, we're all neighbors. Hopefully, we're still friends when this all comes to an end or there's a decision made. But I just hope that we can all still get along and there's no scars left behind. Some of the comments, you know, we need to work this out without cutting people down, without criticizing. You just need to have a plan. You just need to have a plan, but we don't need to backmouth each other. Thank you.